Twenty nineteen, please all rise for the quadra.
Heavenly Father, we come before you saying, Lord, thank you for another day that we've never seen before. We ask for your grace and your mercy, Lord, and direction. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Calwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Markovich. Warpo.
Here.
Let the record show, eight present, one absent. Item three, reading of the minutes. Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I refer this floor to Councilman Spatelli.
Councilman Spatelli.
The motion accept the minutes from September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen be placed on file, please.
Second.
Item's been, motion's been made to accept the minutes and place on file and seconded by Councilman Higgs. Any discussion?
Correction, point of order, the second was made by another councilman, it wasn't Councilman Higgs.
Councilman Emerson. Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. Item four, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
The motion that we approve claims, beginning with claim dated nine thirty nineteen and ending with claims dated ten-two nineteen. Be claimed fifty-four oh-one through claim fifty-six, sixty-seven inclusive.
Second.
Counts, item's been, I'm sorry, claims have been.
Motion is.
Motion has been made for the claims, for approval of claims, second, by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
The motion that we include, claim number fifty-six sixty-eight to Greater Hammond Community Services, with some of one hundred dollars, and to, and claim number five-six-six-nine for Matty's Broken Heart, for one hundred dollars.
Second.
It's an amendment, yes.
Amendment is, the motion has been made to amend the claims. Motion has been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilman Higgs. Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk, roll call.
This is on the, the two items that Councilman had mentioned. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich. Warpo.
Yes, motion, the amendment passes, eight in favor, zero against. Now the claims as amended.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich. Warpo.
Yes. Motion passes, eight in favor, one absent. Number five, public hearings. We have three of them tonight. First meeting, first public hearing is the twenty-twenty City of Hammond Budget Proposal, sponsored by Mayor Thomas M. McDermott Jr. Second public hearing is the twenty-twenty Hammond Redevelopment Budget Proposal, sponsored by Councilman Hans Spatelli and Councilwoman Janet Vines. And the third public hearing is the twenty-twenty Budget Proposal, Sanitary District of Hammond Sewer Maintenance Fund six-oh-eight, and Special Sanitary Debt Fund three-oh-nine, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, Councilman Spatelli, and myself. Anybody wishing to speak on those items can address them?
Good evening, Council, I'm going to speak on the Civil City Budget for you today. And then prior to the other public hearings, we'll have the representatives from the redevelopment and sanitary district come and give you a brief summary on those budgets as well, and then we will proceed to the public hearing for anyone who wishes to speak. As you received in your budget books, we gave you just a big, brief summary of how the process works, how we meet with the departments, how we came to arrive at the mayor's budget proposal for twenty-twenty. So I'm going to direct you to the page called Items to Note, and we're going to go through some of that, which I think hits on the key points that are relevant for this upcoming year's budget. So for twenty-twenty, the total budget for all levy funds decreased by two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. That leaves us at a budget of eighty-three-point-five million. The proposed tax rates for all funds is two-point-five-five-zero-four, which is a five percent reduction from the twenty-nineteen proposed rate. And this is the rate that will be further reduced once the certified assessed value of the city is used to calculate the certified budget order by the Department of Local Government and Finance. The inflated rate is used when we make our budgets to ensure that our rates allow for a collection of our full levy. Our estimated civil max levy for twenty-twenty is forty-seven-point-three million. And our estimated tax cap or circuit breaker loss is thirteen million. This is based upon the most recent numbers issued in the report from the DLGF on July sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Now, if we use our average collection rate of ninety-four percent, that is net of the circuit breakers, we will estimate the city's total levy collections to be thirty-two-point-three million dollars. So that thirty-two-point-three million is all the property taxes that we'll collect to fund all of those levy funds in your budget. So the eighty-three-point-five million is being funded by only thirty-two-point-three million in property tax collections. Typically, you're going to see that be one of the biggest revenue sources for any levy fund. But as the circuit breakers have kicked in fully this upcoming year, we have seen more significant losses. So this leaves us with a fifty-one-point-two million dollar, or sixty-one percent of those levy fund budgets to be funded by other sources, meaning fees, meaning other tax sources, any gaming dollars, things of that nature. So how exactly did we prepare for the twenty-twenty additional circuit breaker losses? First and foremost, mayor has committed to transferring one million dollars of his twenty-nineteen gaming dollars to support the twenty-twenty general fund budget. I've worked very closely with the mayor and all of our department heads for several months in coming up with ideas in how we can maintain adequate staffing levels in all of our departments while balancing the need to reduce our budgets. And we were able to find places, especially in places like Public Works and other large departments, where we can make attrition-related staffing reductions, and that would result in a six-hundred-thousand-dollar reduction to the budget in twenty-twenty. As you all know, the final phase of the city court is happening at the end of this year. And because of the changes there, we will see a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar reduction from the twenty-nineteen figures. College bound, so we will be using one-point-one million of tax increment financing to fund our college bound program through partnership with Purdue, making them an eligible entity. And this is allowed under the educational and work training programs that are defined in Indiana Code thirty-six-seven-twenty-five-seven. We increased our pilot payments from the sanitary district, water department, and port authority, which will generate an additional one-point-six million dollars. As you know, we passed an ordinance last council meeting to update the inspection and permit fees, which is expected to promote, or excuse me, generate an additional three-hundred to four-hundred thousand dollars. Lastly, all departments met with me at many times, with the mayor several times, and they were all asked to make cuts where possible. And most did find ways to do that, you'll see in your budget, some of them, you know, may not be able to make cuts towards the personal services, which are salary line items, but every other department did cut somewhere. And in doing that, it helped us to reduce our overall general fund budget by two-point-four million dollars. So if we talk about our biggest fund, which is in our budget that you approve annually, our general fund, as I said, we reduced it by two-point-four million dollars. That is a three-point-five percent reduction from twenty-nineteen. And our general fund budget is sixty-six million, one-hundred-seventeen thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. All salaries do include a proposed two percent raise from their current rates. Our large expenses include college bound, which is three-point-five, five million, which is down because of that transfer of payments to Tiff District. So we are still holding steady at four, four million, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand as an estimated budget for that department. Insurance, which is at twelve-point-four million, and our public safety cost on the general fund alone was forty-point-two million dollars. As far as public safety goes, they make up fifty-four-point-eight million of all budgeted funds. Thirty-two million of that is police, twenty-two-point-eight is fire, and they equal fifty-two percent of the general fund budget. They would be significantly more of our general fund budget if we were not able to shift some of their expenses to other funds. The gaming budget that you have before you includes twelve-point-one million going to support the general fund, that is down from twelve-point-five in the past. All districts will receive the same one-point-seven-five million. The shared ten percent will receive one-point-five million, and they will receive five-point-one million. The shared ten percent, as you know, typically are used to match funds for citywide engineering projects. Due to legislative changes in how we are to use our MVH funds, most, most cities who don't have the luxury of gaming dollars to build roads have to use their MVH funds to do so. The state legislature enacted a law that states that we have to use half of our MVH distribution on construction projects. So we, this year, in the twenty-twenty budget, we will be using the ten percent, one-point-five, that normally would do construction to cover the expenses that will be, that are not qualified under the restricted MVH funds. That one-point-five will be made up in the MVH restricted funds, so you will see no difference. They will just be processed differently, and I just wanted to make you guys aware of it. Revenue, our major sources do include the property taxes, which is thirty-point, thirty-two-point-three million. That again is assuming ninety-four, ninety-four percent collections of our net circuit breaker rates. Our gaming, which is holding pretty steady at thirty-six-point-five million, and water sales to customer communities. As far as debt is concerned in our budget, we retired the twenty-thousand, or two-thousand-eight G.O. judgment bond, which was previously considered exempt debt in the twenty-nineteen budget, which held a budget of six-hundred thousand, which took levy dollars away from funds like general fund, MVH, and parks. So that has been retired and eliminated. We do have two levy bonds outstanding, those are the two-thousand-fourteen and two-thousand-eighteen park bonds. And their principal and interest payments combined in two-thousand-and-twenty equal just under two million. The other payments that we have, that is not technically considered debt, but we wanted to bring to your attention, is the energy project. So our, our energy savings project, so the construction financing payments, which are in the form of an installment payment contract, equal one-point-five million annually, and the vehicle lease payments equal one-point-two annually. These are paid for, the savings in fuel, maintenance, and capital outlay and utility costs that were previously in the budget. This does not affect tax rate and is not considered debt under the Indiana Code. Those are the kind of high notes I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions relating to any particular budget or anything in general. As we do always, there are, in your, in your budget book, there are some graphs and charts showing you how general fund is broken apart. You'll see that most of that is spent on personal services, which includes salary, perf, insurance payments, things of that nature. And the majority of those go to public safety. If anyone has any questions for me?
Anybody got any questions for? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak on these three public hearings?
George, George Stoy, Robert Sale. I was hoping to get a breakdown, similar, not, maybe not as extensive, with respect to the sanitary district. Is, can anybody, either on the dais here, or somebody speak to that, what the status of things are, their financial condition, yada, yada, yada?
Council, as I mentioned, as these are separate public hearings, so be taken individually, and the representatives from each budget will come up and present a small summary just decided.
My bad.
Does anybody else wish to speak on the twenty-twenty City of Hammond Budget Proposal? Nobody else wants to speak? Moving on to public hearing B, the twenty-twenty Hammond Redevelopment Budget Proposal, does anybody wish to speak on that?
Hi, ours is pretty easy. Overall budget, we're decreased from two thousand and nineteen, it was five-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, nine dollars, to twenty-twenty. It's going to be five-thirteen-nine-thirty-two. So we're decreased by nine-thousand-seventy-seven dollars. The only increase we have is the two percent proposed salary increase. But our tax cap went down fourteen thousand, so that kind of offset it. So we're still decreased by nine thousand. Any questions?
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on the twenty-twenty Hammond Redevelopment Budget Proposal? There are none, moving on to item C. The twenty-twenty Budget Proposal of the Sanitary District of Hammond Sewer Maintenance Fund six-oh-eight, Special Debt, Special Sanitary Debt Fund three-oh-nine.
Council, good afternoon. Pretty much, just a rundown, the Hammond Sanitary District also includes the sewer department. The sewer department is the only department in the sanitary district that actually is funded by tax dollars. So that's what we're here to talk about today. And as compared to last year, I'll let Rachel get into the real numbers. We're about the same as he always was, about three-and-a-half million dollars is what is needed to fund his department. As I have been talking to the council for the last year and a half, because of the tax caps, we're going to have to look at being really creative going into twenty-twenty. So with that being said, I'll be coming to all of you in probably a few weeks to talk about what our plan is for the sewer department. But I'll let Rachel kind of just get into some of those numbers.
So I did send out a summary from last year to this year, just to show the changes for each year. We're pretty much at the same amount of budget. We will have some large reductions due to the property tax caps. We won't send a distribution to Munster for their portion of the property tax draw. Other than that, we did not have to draw a tax anticipation warrant for twenty-nineteen, so we won't have that large repayment at the end of the year. So that much, for the sewer budget, pretty much stood the same. For the debt funds, there's only one this year because they're all considered non-exempt. So I put the two from last year together, so you guys can kind of see that it increased a small amount, two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, and that is due to principal payments to the debt service.
We're open for questions. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think, I forgot your name.
Rachel.
Rachel. You, and Marty, you said you were going to try to come before the council with some creative ideas. Can you give me any precise ideas that you have off the top of your head right now?
We're, we're still working on that plan. We haven't really put it together and, and been, had a chance to be able to go in front of the mayor to let him know what's happening. So I would assume probably in the next two to three weeks, I'll have something I'll be able to show you.
Any further questions? Anybody else have any questions? Does anybody else wish to speak on this budget? Does anybody else wish to speak on this budget? Public hearings are closed. Item six, communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I would like to thank some of my constituents, Camille Robinson, Juan's Barbecue, Kendall Warner, and a number of individuals, including First Baptist Church. We had an opportunity on last Thursday to feed the homeless in our city, and those that were interested in getting something to eat on Thursday. And I really appreciate your help, and I will continue to do what's needed for not just the disadvantaged, but for the entire city of Hammond. So thank you again for your help and your participation in feeding the homeless in our city.
Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? I'm sorry, communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Yes, just a reminder, we had the young lady come before us the last meeting, but, and I, I saw that Clerk Golick had given a donation to this. But Matty's Broken Heart Benefit is October twelfth, from five to ten P.M. at the Optimist Club in Hammond, seventy-fifteen Kennedy. It's only a ten-dollar entry, includes dinner and dessert, and they got raffles, music, and more. Any information contact, two-one-nine-six-one-six-two-nine-two. Thank you.
Anything else on the communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Smith, Brazil, and Warner Funeral Home also was a great contributor to the feeding the homeless in our city. So thank you, Smith, Brazil, and Warner Funeral Home as well.
Anybody else have any communications? Communications are closed. Item seven, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, at this time, I would like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Wednesday, October ninth, Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will have a meeting at two P.M. The East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, October fifteenth, six-thirty P.M. at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch on the Road will meet Friday, October eleventh, at one P.M. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, October seventeenth, seven P.M. at the Jean Shepherd Center. The South Hammond Crime Watch will meet Thursday, October seventeenth, seven P.M. at the Hammond Housing Authority Building. The South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch, they only meet twice a year, and they have a meeting coming up on Thursday, October twenty-fourth, at Trinity Lutheran Church on the corner of one-hundred-and-seventy-third and Holman. That begins at six-thirty P.M. And the Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, October tenth, six-thirty P.M. at Calumet College. As I announce every meeting, this is an excellent opportunity for anyone who has any questions or concerns in their neighborhood to come and address directly to the community policing officer, whatever your concern is, no matter what your neighborhood is. Attend a meeting, find out what's going on, and, and you also get a lot of good information. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Any other committee reports? Committee reports are closed. Item eight, ordinance third and final passage, there are none. Item nine, introduction of ordinances.
Item A. The introduction of the ordinance of the Hammond City two-thousand-and-twenty proposed budget, sponsored by Mayor McDermott.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of nineteen-twenty, which is the twenty-twenty City of Hammond Budget, and schedule a committee meeting on Monday, October twenty-first, four-thirty P.M. with council as a whole.
Second.
The ordinance has been introduced by Councilwoman Vines and seconded by Councilman Rakos for a, I'm sorry, a committee hearing of council as a whole at four-thirty P.M. on October, October twenty-first. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Item B, ordinance nineteen-dash-twenty-one, is the two-thousand-and-twenty Budget Proposal for the Hammond Redevelopment Department, sponsored by the mayor.
Mr. President, so this meeting can go quickly.
Excuse me, I make a correction. Councilmen Spatelli and Vines is sponsoring this one.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion that we move nineteen-twenty-one on first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole with a committee meeting on October twenty-first at four-thirty. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Spatelli.
The ordinance nineteen-twenty-one has been made, a motion made that we have a committee hearing of council as a whole on October twenty-first at four-thirty P.M. and seconded by.
Spatelli.
Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Item C, ordinance nineteen-dash-twenty-two, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Warpo and Spatelli.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion that we move nineteen-twenty-two on first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole with a committee meeting on October twenty-first at four-thirty. I so move.
Second.
The ordinance nineteen-twenty-two, motion is made to move it to council as a whole on October twenty-first at four-thirty P.M., seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. No, those opposed, say no? I'll get this. The ayes have it.
Item D, ordinance number nineteen-dash-twenty-three, and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all city officials and employees of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of nineteen-twenty-three and refer to council as a whole with a meeting on October twenty-first at four-thirty P.M.
Second.
Ordinance is moved for, motion has been made and seconded for council as a whole, October twenty-first at four-thirty P.M. And seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Item E, ordinance nineteen-dash-twenty-four, sponsored by Councilman, I mean Mayor McDermott, and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all policemen and firemen of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion that we move nineteen-twenty-four on first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole with a committee meeting on October twenty-first at four-thirty P.M. I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Higgs to have a committee meeting with council as a whole, October twenty-first at four-thirty P.M. And seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
President Warpo, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Is there item E on here?
Number ten, move to number ten.
Move to number ten. Resolutions.
Item A. Resolution nineteen-R dash twenty-nine, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. A resolution of the Hammond Common Council approving the construction agreement of the Wesley Corridor Rail Project between the City of Hammond and the Northern Indiana Commuter Transportation District.
President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Final passage of nineteen-R dash twenty-nine.
Second.
Resolution's been sponsored by Councilman Spatelli and seconded by Councilman Higgs. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
During my tenure being on the council, just to reflect on this. During my tenure of being on the council, just to reflect on this, I think it's a great investment, not only to the City of Hammond, but a number of communities are going to benefit from this project. So I do wish them well, and hopefully all the funding will come to secure this project.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Mayor.
You know, thank you very much, Councilman Higgs. That was very nice of you. I appreciate that. Today was, seems like a pretty significant day in the life of this project. The federal funding for engineering this project has been green lighted, which is a very, very positive sign that eventually the entire project's going to be green lighted. As you all remember, a couple of years ago, shortly after Congressman Viskowski attended a council meeting, we, about six months later, we approved Hammond's participation in this train project. Originally, they were asking Hammond to do 33% of our seat revenue, which would have been about $900,000 a year. We would have had to commit that for 30 years, which would have been $27 million, if I do my math correctly. In return for the 27 that was asked for, we would have been guaranteed a couple hundred million dollars in infrastructure improvements in Hammond. We whittled that down to 15% of our seat revenue over 30 years, which is a $450,000 annual commitment from the City of Hammond towards this project. Once the project was green lighted, I'm not sure if it's been officially green lighted, meaning we have to start paying in 2019, or if it's going to wait until 2020, but overall, our, first off, our participation in this project's going to begin, it appears, shortly. If it's not in 2019, surely in 2020, we're going to be obligated to the federal government for the next 30 years for our participation in this project. But the good news is, it's estimated well over $100 million worth of improvements that are coming to our city. If you look at the math and how much work is going to be done in our city, I'd say it's way closer to a quarter billion that's going to be done over the next five years in Hammond through infrastructure work. You have in your packet the agreement that we're making with NICD, Northern Indiana Commuter Transportation District, which is the South Shore. In that packet, you'll also see the route that the train's going to take through our city, where the stations will be, plans for the stations. It appears that this project's moving forward, and we already committed that we're on the train, so I just wanted to put it on your radar that it seems like things are moving forward, and we're going to have to start getting ready to, you know, perform our end of the deal. So I don't know if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Any further questions? Any further discussion?
Heather's going to be following up shortly, Mr. Chairman, about when Hammond's participation of seat at money has to take place. It was in the 2019 budget. It's definitely in the 2020 budget, so.
Further discussion?
Mr. President, so that's already been budgeted for. It's not going to, we're not going to have to take another hit because of that, right?
No, sir. Councilman Rakos, we anticipated this last year when we did our budget. It's in the budget for this year. Obviously, if we don't have to pay it this year, we could use that for other money, other funding, like Chicago Avenue, for instance, we could use it as the local match to help move that project along, but it's in our budget. We're not going to have to make any transactions to cover that.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, one more thing. I apologize.
Sorry.
I view this as a continuation of our promise. We promised, we signed on the dotted line, and this is just a formalization of our agreement with NICD, so it would be bad faith if it didn't pass. That's all I want to say.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Markovich. Warpo.
Yes. Motion passes, a resolution passes, eight in favor, zero opposed. Is there any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Item 19-25 on the agenda is the BZA. Can I have the city clerk read it, please?
Certainly. The BZA number Z-19-16, for variance of the use from zoning ordinance to allow a parking lot for a commercial facility in an R1U, single-family urban residential district located at 4938 Columbia Avenue within the City of Hammond Lake County. The petitioner is L.A. Hacienda Esteca LLC.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I move for approval of 19-25.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve 19-25 by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Higgs. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Hacienda Esteca's Restaurant on 150th and Columbia. They need additional parking because of the expansion of the business. They want to expand their parking. So they bought a vacated house just north of it, and they're going to expand their parking lot to that area. It's a place that's rapidly improving because of their quality food and service, and it's going to be a good addition. I mean, it's going to help the business quite a bit. Right now, people are, they have a limited parking lot now, about 20 spaces, parking spaces. This would greatly help improve and expand the business. They plan further expansion later on, but I strongly support it and ask my colleagues to support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Call for the vote.
Sure. Do a roll call vote.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Markovich. Warpo.
Yes. Motion passes, eight in favor, zero opposed. Is there any other new and unfinished business? Is there any other new and unfinished business? I just, real quick, I know I'm not supposed to say a lot, but I just kind of impressed that I saw a young kid sitting in the front row here, and he was in caucus, and it's always nice to see younger people at council meetings that are not running first against one of us, so. I commend you for showing up. Thank you. Is there any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression, we have one listed, George Stoya.
There's another one.
He didn't sign in. We have another one that wishes to speak that didn't sign the sheet. Do you want to go last, or do you, I mean? Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to break. Two things. Look, council, mayor. Two things. We're, we're actually, I'm here in two portions. One, personal, one for business. We're starting a, we're part of a nonprofit that has a gaming license with the state. We're trying to get, it's, we're going to be producing a progressive raffle, very similar to the ones they have in Illinois.
Sir, I apologize. Can you state your name and your?
I'm sorry. Antonio Alvarez, on behalf of Xavier Research, and we're going to be discussing producing a region raffle. What we're trying to attempt is to get exposure on the PAV billboard. I'm not sure what it would be called, the PAV billboard. We're going to be doing a progressive raffle. Ideally, we'll hopefully run the whole eight to, eight months to about a year and a half. We do a poll every week, 52 polls, and obviously, if no one wins the raffle, it keeps growing. We want to post those results on the board, ideally. So I'm not sure what's the procedure for that, or even who's the council person for that particular district by the PAV, which is the, our, out the oratorium by Whiting-Robertsdale location.
It's the first district.
Let me first think. So who would that fall into as of right now? For first districts. Oh, thanks, sir. Thank you. So essentially, that's what we're trying to accomplish. I'm not sure if there's a procedure to submit said documentation to that, but we're already moving forward with the raffle already. It's going to be publicized live, and for transparency, I want to keep every, all the results posted. I myself don't get any money from it. Every money raised, once a month, we give that portion to a local charity, and the, obviously, the winner will get the majority of the money at the end, but that was the essential portion we're trying to accomplish. So I guess I'll be meeting with you later, I guess, today, discuss how, if that's possible. Okay? And then the only other portion would be to talk about, we personally own a piece of lot, a land on, in your district, Mr. President, regarding 8013 Indianapolis. We're going to be pushing forward to doing a zoning change or a variance change to put a billboard up in the next upcoming months. We're going to push it forward initially through our own media company, and then hopefully sell that with rights to potential billboard buyer, such as Lamar or The View or any other one that comes through. So we're trying to gain support for that and seeing, you know, obviously, it's not tomorrow thing, it'll be about 90-day process. I believe the address specifically is, I guess I'm documentation, but 8013 Indianapolis. We assume that's to be the case, but according to our tax bill, it comes back as, oh, I'm sorry, it's on, it is on the, yeah, my side of the street. Yeah, so it's our side, our side. So I get some documentation to show, but I could.
I'll be interested in purchasing one, because I'm running for something else, so I'll see you after the meeting.
Okay. So that was essentially it. And then the only last thing was, we own a property in downtown Hammond or it's off the edge. I know there's some new, we, stuff coming in, which is good, and so I want to see who the contact person that would be, to see what's the plan, three-year plan's going to be for downtown Hammond. I heard there's some good things from the neighbors of ours, like from the owner that don't eat, but we missed the meeting, so we're trying to kind of catch up for that, which would be, I'm assuming Mr. Higgs is area, but I'm not sure if your, with the contact would that be after the fact.
We'll see you after the meeting. We're really not supposed to talk to you. The mayor might want that.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
I want to remind the public that during public comment, the council's not being rude by not answering your questions. It's not a public deposition. It's a public comment. You come up and you comment, and we take it under advisement, so I want to explain to the gentleman that just spoke and anybody else that speaks, during public comment, it's not typical for the council to respond or the mayor to respond. But in this case, I do want to respond about billboards is a very controversial issue. I'm trying to think. I think there's been one billboard built since I've been mayor. It's in Purdue Cal, or it's in Purdue Northwest Field in Dalling Park. I can't remember any other one going up. It's so, I wish him luck with that process. It's a very arduous process, and you want to start off going through zoning and making sure it works that way, but, you know, there's been a lot of people interested over the years in putting billboards all over our city, and they haven't been successful. A, B regarding the PAV, the billboard, not the billboard, the, the message board, thank you. The message board at the PAV, if you'll notice on that, it's all City Hammond events. We don't rent out space. We don't talk about, we've had great organizations from outside of Hammond want to put their stuff up, and we've said no. So if the gentleman is going to be able to get that put up there, he has to go to the Hammond Port Authority, first of all, which isn't, that's not under the control of the city council or of the mayor. Technically, it's under control of the Hammond Port Authority, which meets in the Hammond Marina, and I already know the process they go through is very, it has to be specifically a Hammond-related, City Hammond-related project, so. I just wanted to explain, I think some people think it's rude when the council just looks at them, but this is public comment, not public deposition, so. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. George Stoya.
George Stoya, Robertsdale. I just wanted to, I guess, reiterate, I spoke about it on the radio, but I took great offense recently at the Business Insider article, report, ostensible news report, that placed cities of Hammond, Gary, South Bend.
That's the worst.
What else? The northern tier, essentially stigmatizing the northern tier, largely, I guess, Democratic bastions under the ostensible framework, rubric, whatever you want to call it, of a news report. And I was hoping, and I asked, and I asked this council to, if it would issue a letter, a protest, a complaint, an objection, some form of resistance to this publication, that they just can't take an overly broad and limited set of statistics and claim that they're factually, it's a factually oriented conveyance of information that adequately, what's the, what am I looking for here? Adequately frames or grants or imparts perspective on the condition, and financial condition, maybe socio-political condition of these, of these cities, these regions. I mean, it was just way over the top.
They said we were the miserable cities.
Well, that's.
I'd like to remind the councilman that it's public expression.
Well, you know, and that's just it. Like, one guy on the radio said the misery thing, and there's no people were interviewed for this of all the cities and all the states that this ostensible news report covered. It singled out Indiana pretty good. And to me, that is political. That is not news. That is not journalistically oriented, objective reporting. I just feel that, that this council should issue a statement or something contesting the basis and the, and aim of that kind of reporting. That is just calculated to stigmatize these cities, stigmatize us here in the northern part of Indiana, and stigmatize Democrats. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting. I so move.
Motion made. Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.